You need to fix the website.
I'm sure there's lots of things I need to fix on it.
It still says today. Yep, it says today, there's a board of education. That's why I've spent 15 minutes up there.
I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting for December 14, 2017. And we do not have any time.
Hang it up over there behind you.
Oh, behind the screen. Yeah.
Here.
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 The choice for the choice of the back of the line.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to adopt an...
So move.
Seven. Go call.
Yes.
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 Yes. On three, approval of the November 9, 2017 meeting minutes. Do I have a motion? Go call.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm saying yes.
Members of the Board, thank you so much. We've got, first of all, I would like to thank everyone who came tonight just to hear a Board of Education meeting. That's just really nice. And all the things that you could do, this is an exciting part of your life, so thank you. But in all seriousness, we do have some really awesome recognitions tonight. And we're going to start off with the Kaufman YMCA. And if Jamie Lyerly will start walking her way up here to the front. And we'll talk kind of to the group, the members of the Board. But the Kaufman YMCA is one of the most dynamic, I think, and important organizations in this community. Last year, the Chamber of Commerce started a Friend of Education Award with Springboro Schools. We've now given that award out twice, but the very first award we gave called the Friend of Education Award was the Kaufman YMCA. Because of what they've done for the students, what they've done for the community here in Springboro. So Kaufman has a fundraising campaign every year. And so thanks to the leadership of Jamie Lyerly and three other administrators in this district, Judy Aker from the high school, Brooke Coulter from the junior high, and Brandon Rubenoff from the elementary. They started a fundraising campaign that involved staff, involved parents, and involved students. And their efforts last year brought in the most money that Springboro Schools had ever made for the Kaufman YMCA. It was actually the second most donated by any organization to the Kaufman Y. It was $6,337.87. We just couldn't round it up. We've got it right there. But what we wanted to do tonight was bring David Thompson, the executive director of the Kaufman YMCA here. So that Jamie, as one of our leaders, can hand him that check. And then, I know Mr. Thompson would like to say something to the Board.
Thank you very much.
And Scott Marks. We're going to get a picture of the two of you, and then David with the whole Board. Okay?
Well, on behalf of the Kaufman YMCA and all of the members that we serve, and community members that we serve, and our Board of Directors, I want to say thank you very much to all of the staff, the students, and parents that are a part of this effort to donate to the YMCA. Collectively, we raised $112,000 as a part of our annual campaign in 2017. And those funds, they fund all of the mission work that we do at the YMCA. It's our goal to make sure that as a nonprofit charitable organization, that all of our services are available to everybody in the community, no matter what their ability is to pay. And so we even launched a new thing in the summer of 2017 where we provided free membership to the Y over the summertime for any seventh and eighth grade student in the area so that they could come and participate, be at someplace that was safe and an encouraging environment. And so this type of contribution helps to make that program possible. So on behalf of the YMCA, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, go back here, David. Let's get your board. How do you guys want to do that, Scott? Bring the board up front or have to go back?
Do you want to squeeze it?
And on behalf of Springboro Schools, again, what a great organization. How about a round of... Thank you, Mr. Thompson. We actually launched our campaign for 2018 today. We have six administrators, or actually six contacts from the six different buildings. They're going to be working with Mr. Thompson, looking forward to even a better year. I think we set our goal at over 10,000, so let's see what we can do. 2.2. Board members, parents, community members, it's an honor to have this recognition. We have an amazing building, an amazing educational opportunity for our students in Clear Creek Elementary. And as part of the preschool program, there is a quality award. The highest award you can get is the five-star rating. Jessica Jones, our newly-employed assistant principal, took it upon herself, under the direction of Carrie Porter, our principal, to lead this effort and work with a great team. And so at this point, Jessica, I'm going to have you come forward and talk about what this is. And then we'll bring up the staff a little bit.
All right, thank you. And thank you all for coming. We want to thank you for inviting us here tonight, too. We have many of our preschool staff members here with us, if that's okay. So we obviously just obtained the five-star quality rating for our preschool, which is part of the Ohio Department of Education and the Ohio Johnson Family Service, meshed together, star rating system. And there's a rubric, if you're an educator, you're familiar with those rubrics, that they go through. And they're just kind of going through different sections and points that they want to see if your program is meeting those different points that they're trying to find. We are very honored that in September, we were able to secure an onsite visit. With that, with a little bit of anxiety from just about everybody in the building, every person that we didn't recognize, we were sure was the seventh quality person coming to visit us that day. But she did not disappoint in the fact that she came the day after Halloween. So our preschoolers had maybe been out a little too late that night, or had viewed too many recitals. But we were ready to go that next day anyway. During a visit, they will come into the classroom, they'll talk to teachers, they'll talk to different staff members, administrators, and they're just kind of checking things off of the list, the things that they would like to see. If they don't see something in action, they ask us, how do you work on this? Can you provide documentation for this? And we were able to support everything that we did. We received our rating the middle of November, ironically on a Panther Pow Wow Day. So one of the secretaries jumped up, ran to the Dollar Tree to get five blue star balloons. As she entered the building, one flew away. So we were hopeful that that would be the first time our rating dropped more quickly. So we replaced the balloon, and we were so happy that the teacher was able to come over. And during the presentation, we were able to let our teachers and our whole school community know that we had obtained the five-star rating. So preschools, would you like to put one up? Even if you wouldn't like to put one up.
Now, as they come forward, come on up here. Let's see if you're hugged. Just stand right here, facing the crowd. We are starting something new with the Board of Education at these board meetings. It's going to be called the Board Member or the Board of Educational Board of Combination. And this is the first group that is going to get an award of combination. Now, don't go back and tell the people who aren't here, because we're going to come do this tomorrow in your building. But what we're going to do is each one's going to get a framed award of combination from our board president as you read them off.
Sure. Amy Carrano. I'm sorry, I wanted to do it. Suzie Trager. And N.C.N.U.A. Gretchen Kuponia. Melissa. Amy Britt. Kathy Lynn. Holly Christie. Oh, Jessica Jones.
That's her.
Mrs. Porter.
Now, ladies, don't leave. We're not done now. Did everyone get one? Did we get it right? We didn't? No, we've got it. Where's Heather?
What do you... I got names.
Now, with that being said, we also have a couple other people. One is here and one is on the way that wanted to give you guys some recognition as well. And that first person, hold on here, we're getting that last certificate. We want to hand that to you. All right, here she comes.
Jane.
All right. Before we bring the next one, how about a round of applause for this? They've come all the way from Columbus to be able to recognize you when they heard about this award. And that is our Ohio House of Representatives member and our state senator. Senator Wilson and Representative Lipscomb, this time, come on forward and say what you'd like to say.
Thank you. I'll start because Representative Lipscomb was caught in traffic. He can't tell us. He's like, oh, I'm coming, I'm coming, I'm on my way. He has a special presentation for you. But I want to say on behalf of President Opphoff, the Senate President, and on behalf of the entire Senate, we are very proud of what you've accomplished. I had the privilege of being on school board at Lebanon, Ohio, for eight years, and then being a trustee of my university. So when I got to Columbus as a new state senator, they thought I'd do something about education. They put me on the education committee. And the one thing that I learned in the one year I've been up there is that there's nothing more important than early childhood education. What you do to prepare those students to be kindergarten-ready is unbelievable. Because if we don't start everybody out on some kind of even plane, or if you don't get them in a place, and then the kindergarten teacher doesn't get them in a place, when they enter school, and they're not on somewhat of an even plane, it's a major problem. And that major problem manifests itself in the third-grade reading test, as you all know. And that third-grade reading test is so important that we have everybody caught up. Because the statistics are staggering as to what happens to somebody that hasn't learned to read so they can read to learn for a fourth or a third grade. It is just staggering. I'll give you one scary statistic. You know how the Department of Corrections sizes Ohio's prisons? One of the major factors are the results of the third-grade reading test. That's how important this is. That's how important what you do every day to get these kids ready to get into school, to learn to read. Because if they have by third grade, great, and they can't read to learn, they're done. It's essential. Thank you for what you do every day, and congratulations on your five-star rating.
I'd like to thank everybody for being here tonight, participating in this program. Senator Wilson, it's nice to see you. I would like you to continue everything you do in teaching, but I'd like you to add teaching how to plan and schedule. Because I missed that class, and I'm struggling, okay? I'm late on purpose to make Senator Wilson look good. Okay, no, I got caught in a bad accident on 675. You'll see it on the news tonight. So this was the 74th time that I've made the trip from Columbus to the break in Springboro this year. And it's only the second time I've been ran into an incident, so I apologize for that. On behalf of the Ohio House of Representatives and our Speaker, Ms. Rosenberg, and myself as your state rep, I do have an award for you to present. You'll see it's a proclamation signed by the Speaker of the House. It reads, "On behalf of the members of the Ohio House of Representatives, the 132nd General Assembly, we are pleased to accept special recognition to Clear Creek Elementary Preschool on being presented with a five-star step-up to quality award from the Ohio Department of Education and the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services. Clear Creek Elementary Preschool has displayed an unwavering dedication to exceeding the highest standards of educational quality. The faculty administration have demonstrated leadership and foresight in providing students with the best possible education. And as a result of their tremendous efforts, the school has been awarded the five-star step-up to quality rating for its exemplary work. Since its inception, Clear Creek Elementary Preschool has been responsive to the needs of young people by preparing them to attend a primary school. All these responsible, all those responsible for the institution's success, including its principal, Carrie Porter, can reflect with pride on the strong tradition of scholastic gifts upon which it can build even more productive and rewarding future. Thus, it's a genuine satisfaction we applaud Clear Creek Elementary Preschool on its resaceroom and salute it as one of Ohio's top-ranked preschools." And before you guys sit down, Mrs. Porter has a few things to say.
Well, again, these women are just part of the wonderful staff at Clear Creek. And on behalf of Ms. Jones, myself, and Steph, we'd like to give the board a little holiday ornament. I can't get a word in. We might be a little early on the January 11th. Thank you for all the work you do and supporting us every day with all of our children of all ages here. Thank you. Thank you. So thank you, ladies.
For everyone here tonight seeing what we believe is one of the greatest honors in Clear Creek Elementary to have. Congratulations, and we commend you on your hard work. With that, we want to get a couple pictures. What we'd like to do is get all of you in the Board of Education and our House and Senate members. So why don't we go on around back? Scott's going to come on up and just take care of you with this. Another round of applause for Clear Creek. This is President, members of the Board. I've asked please to sit down just for a minute because this is such an unique opportunity. I didn't know whether or not anyone would like to have a question or something at one point.
I definitely do. Did you guys know? You knew that when you gave me the floor and the opportunity. The work that I do professionally, day in and day out, is step-up to quality. So I have such respect for you guys. I have coaches that go into classrooms and help teachers to increase the quality of their work so that they can get star rated in a community-based center. So thank you so much for all that you've done. It's a tremendous amount of work and what you're doing to prepare our kids for kindergarten is huge. So thank you so much. We just know that our kids are getting the best that there is, and it was not an easy job, what you guys did. The nervousness that comes with the interviews and all of that is huge. So thank you so much. You've done an outstanding job, and you just have represented Springboro so well. So I really appreciate all that you've done. Thank you.
I'll just say, thank you for everything you guys have done. I know you've put in a lot of effort, personal connection to Clear Creek, so I know that you guys put in the work. I will say, it doesn't surprise me at all that you guys got five stars, so I had it down in my mind. So congratulations, anyway. You guys did fantastic. Thank you for representing us.
So this isn't anything new to me because Ramona keeps me, she's your number-one fan down there. So she tells me all the great things you're doing. Obviously, it paid off in this recognition, so thanks to you all for doing it.
Okay, congratulations, and we appreciate everything you're doing. With that, Mr. President, we're going to move to 2.3. And I'm going to introduce Tracy Rippon, the principal of Five Points Elementary, for an amazing student presentation tonight, and these kids are excited. And if it gets, I'm excited, I know me twenty of you are going to talk a half hour, so it'd be great.
Ultimately, we're going to roll in the excellence here because I've got a very energized, ready-to-go third-grade group from Mrs. Paul's class, equal sharing of dark and social studies. They're going to share a cross-curricular project that they worked on, tying in one of the books that they read. We also have Mrs. Gant, who is the art teacher, who has connected with Mrs. Paul and the students to bring art into life with their project and their learning. And with the support of Mrs. Ramirez, who brought in Google goggles, which we're going to have some fun with sharing how they implemented this new technology into their learning experience. So let me introduce Jenny Paul.
Hi, everyone. I'm really excited about these fan projects because I like to be able to incorporate a lot of different people into the project. So we read the book, what makes our files of her... And in the story, these two kids about their age decide that they're going to leave home because of the injustices they're facing, which are chores. And so they hide out in the Metropolitan Museum of Art for over a week. And so it's a really fascinating story. So as I'm reading it, I'm thinking, oh, this would be so cool if we could take a trip there. So of course, that led to Mrs. Ramirez, and I emailed her during the summer. She's like, oh, I was just thinking of that. Like, I was going to ask you if you would try it out. Like, of course I would. So then, once I started planning it, I thought of, in the story, there's an exhibit in Egypt, so I thought of Mrs. Gant. And of course, I went to Mrs. Gant, and she was like, oh, sure, I'd love to help out. So it just kind of all came together. So the book we read, we did some novel chats, did a lot of critical thinking with it. The kids, I think, really enjoyed the story. And then we also brought in social studies. We got to study a map of the world, looked at the train routes. That was kind of fascinating for them. And we also took a trip on the Google goggles to the station, Grand Central Station, so that was kind of neat. And a lot of kids, I've never actually been on a subway or a train like that, so it was kind of neat. And then we also brought in Mrs. Ramirez. And Mrs. Ramirez came in, and it was fascinating, I think, for the kids. Some of them, of course, you know, they picked that up so quickly. They were scrolling through the films and hoping it up before we could even tell them instructions. So that's where we are now with the technology. The kids are way ahead of us. So we did the goggles, we took a trip to Egypt, and we took a trip to New York. We did the Statue of Liberty. We did the train station. And then we also, Mrs. Gant, where's Mrs. Gant? So then, Mrs. Gant, you can tell them how you brought in Egypt because one of the exhibits at the Met Museum had the Egyptian pieces, and they did some of their belongings in some of the Egyptian pieces.
Right. So when she came to me and asked if I would help, I said absolutely. And thinking of Egyptian art and the Egyptian, especially the historic artifacts, of course, I think, you know, got to go big or go home. So we made these light, close-to-life-sized Egyptian sarcophaguses that the kids worked on. And kind of looked at them from an artistic standpoint and looked closely at the patterns and designs and what they're made of. The kids laid down on the floor and traced their bodies. We talked about what a sarcophagus was and some of the details of the symbols that were represented on the pieces. And they went, they pretty much took it from there, so.
And I liked how, too, she brought in the linguistics, which was the higher level. And so we got to talk about that. And it was fascinating. I know I got some emails from parents who said that the kids were actually writing notes to them in hieroglyphics and making them translate. So I thought that was pretty cool. So I think just the enthusiasm behind it all, the kids were making extensions of their own at home. So that was really neat to see. And I know at like, in recess, I was finding notes in hieroglyphics and like, I should really investigate this. We also did, they don't actually have an exhibition for the actual men and women, but I was really, I have to find something. So we also introduced, there's a site, Google Arts and Culture. And so if you click on that, you can go to that, and it's a really cool resource where you can do three and fours. So we did that as an extension of Google Classroom, and the kids could go through there. And if you go to explore down below. I've got a kid up here down there. You can go to explore, but it's pretty neat. You can open to anything. You can go to all the different cool works. It was really cool. I know Vance was showing me, he found right away the bed that the kids slept in. And it's really neat, you can just actually go through the whole museum in your house. It's the floor of it. So that's another cool resource that we're using in the classroom. And they have a ton of different expeditions through that as well. So if the kids want to come up, there's guys. And Stacy, and Ashton, and Lexi, and Ellen, and Vance, and Lemon, and Dee. And so we're going to ask them, you know, some questions about the project, like you guys here, what they elected to. You can ask them the questions, and they're coming to want to leave here with us, even though they are still their... All right, so I asked them, why was it more exciting to use the Google, to visit New York City instead of just looking at it?
You could experience it more, and it felt more like you were actually in it.
That's what we could found. You said you weren't quite sure. And so this is Mr. Wilson, Ellen, and I asked you, what exhibition do you want to go to in New York City or Egypt and why?
I am going to Egypt the most because...
I enjoy Egypt the most because there were, there were more structures to look at and it was just bigger than New York.
Okay. And then Devon, where did you like most of the...
I liked going to the Egyptian because the hieroglyphs were huge and it was really powerful.
Awesome. Yeah. And I think that was one thing, using the goggles, the, just the perspective of the objects to the kids, like when they're looking up at the Statue of Liberty, just to have that view was the main thing. And then, Mrs. Gant, ask them some questions about their art projects?
Yeah, we're going to start with Paxton. Do you want to show which one's your art piece? Which one was your guys that you worked on?
Our sarcophagus.
So it's on the red paper?
Yeah.
Do you want to talk a little bit about your design and why you picked those patterns?
We chose the design as our, mostly because we wanted them to stand out on random designs.
Nice. It turned out, we talked a lot about lines, shapes, and patterns, and the colors, the materials, and made up and how to reproduce that. Vance, what do you think? I had them work in small groups on these, like groups of three or four. You want to talk a little bit about your group?
So how it worked really well. So how it worked was anybody worked on one piece of the sarcophagus and then somebody else worked on the other.
Awesome. So somebody would work on the face and the head and the headdress, and then somebody else would work on the patterns. And then what, tell them what the, exactly. I was just going to say, tell them what your guys' favorite part was. Can you show them on the pieces, which part that is?
Something down.
Part down on the bottom, that's kind of engraved in stone? Awesome. Eevee, what about you? How did you draw or design the kid's face? Want to talk about the headdress and the face a little bit?
The headdress design, by just using lines and then coloring it in. And then we placed by just drawing an oval and shaping it so it could actually look like a head. And then we drew Egyptian eyes and then a mouth. And then it started to look more like a face.
That was the hard part. Who did that, your group? Did you work together?
We did.
Lexi?
And while they were...
Yeah, while we were doing the head, you guys were doing the head.
See that teamwork? All right, Lexi, you want to talk a little bit about the hieroglyphics?
Okay, so we chose the word king because we thought of many different words that would represent him. So we thought of king. And then hieroglyphics are how Egyptians write stories. They are pictures that represent life.
And that's about it. Well said. Good job, you guys.
So would that be cool if you guys got to experience what they did? So we loaded the trip on our Google goggles. We're just going to let you guys pan it out to you, let you take a quick look at them and see what they saw. Anybody in the audience like to... Is it not working?
And I know you want to look at these all night.
You just have to kind of tuck around.
All the students who talked tonight, you can look at me. All right. You guys did a great job. It's really, we're so proud of you and everything you learned. We've got a little surprise for you. For that, I want to see if any of the board members have questions for you. Ready? Okay. Any questions or any comments?
So I do have a question and a comment. So I am not an expert on Egypt, but if I look at the names above the sarcophaguses, those don't look very Egyptian to me. So who came up with King Elvis and King Val...
Thank you.
You smirched on that. Okay, great. Who's the Elvis fan? Okay. He's a king.
He was a king.
Wow, very good, very good.
Very clever. We're just discussing, like, I have very few memories of my childhood education, but I do remember when we learned about Egypt. And we had nothing like this, that we were able to go and actually experience the hieroglyphs. You guys, who consider yourself very fortunate, everywhere we got that's amazing. So, great job.
Right. We had to walk in.
Yeah, exactly.
We are very fortunate to have these Google goggles and have this hieroglyphs within our building. Working with different teachers, different classes, different experiences, it's really brought learning to life. And they have had a blast. And that's what's all about. So we're very grateful.
All right, now, students, you guys did awesome. And here's a surprise. In my hand, I hold seven books. Now, inside this book, there's a label. This book is I Survived the American Revolution. So inside this book, a label says, "This book is donated to the Five Points Elementary Library on behalf of Vance..." Yeah, is that you? And it'll say, "For his presentation to the Springboro Schools Board of Education on December 14, 2017." So in a little bit, I'm going to give you seven books to your principal. She's going to make sure either her or your teacher, Vance, you're going to sign. Either her son or friend, however you want. You'll sign this. And each one of you will sign a different book. So that whenever somebody goes to the library and checks this book out, they know it's at the library because Vance spoke tonight. And each one of you will have your name in a different book. You guys did a great job. Folks, let's get around it. Well, ladies and gentlemen, we had three awesome presentations tonight. For all of you who were part of the presentation, feel free to sit. There you go. You guys can watch more side. Hold on, hold on. Let me take a quick picture. Thank you, thank you. Gotcha. Bring the kids back. Don't be a crazy. This is Griffin. Let's bring the kids to the teacher's room. We need a picture. Kids, come on. Just stand back. Where's your teacher? Stand in the presence of the teacher. There you go. All right, do it again. One, two, three. Santa's watching.
Santa's watching.
Can you turn off the projector for me before you leave?
Yes. Oh, oh.
We were hoping this was awesome. People liked to go out and what we do. We have never paid anybody to come to Step Fest. And we would like to have that option this year. The program is to model all of our sarcophagus. They came three or four years ago to talk to the American parents. And that's how we started this Step Fest. So they get the Cincinnati Museum to come in. They get the Astronomy Society to come in. They get COSI or they get Boon Shop to come down. And those people are not locals. They are businesses, but they are not for-profit businesses. So they need money. They need money to come to our Step Fest. We think it would add a lot to the Step Fest and we're hoping that you can help out.
What are the money sources for this party?
Well, I did some research and most of these places that we want are going to cost a terrible amount of dollars to come down. You know, the zoo can come up with snakes and stuff. And COSI, yeah. COSI has stuff. Boon Shop has stuff. Boon Shop comes out and they have little displays. Like, if you take your kids or your grandkids to these kind of interactive museums where they've got the things and they're going to do different, different scientific things. So we just would like to have that option to be able to rock with it.
Instead of going to tonight, talk about it instead of having...
So what was the requested amount if...
Do you have one?
We, we would like a thousand dollars if possible.
And this was from the board account that they had set aside. It's not coming from the general, which we never use. It's just, it's like, for the board budget division, it happens to be used up.
Right.
What was the budget for that again?
I'm going to say there's seventy thousand at seven side each year.
You say seventy?
Do you have an estimate of how many people attend or what your attendance is?
Last year was over thirteen hundred.
Yeah, our letter says, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
We had a, we had an obstacle with the weather for the first hour.
Yeah.
But we're expecting it to be bigger this year.
Remember that affected the rocket launch.
Yes. They did get off, but we had to delay.
We had John Penelope on the roof doing something else. And we had one really cool, I can't remember.
The soil and water. We had a trailer. They had to leave.
And they were going to do really neat things for us, but they couldn't because it was lightning.
And the fire department. And we had something else we were going to put outside, but because of the weather, we kind of lost a few things. And most people, I think, waited, had a little dinner, waited out the rain, they came. Because when seven o'clock hit, we were packed. And that's, I mean, you think about thirteen hundred people.
Do you have any idea how many people will come in that you're talking about with different groups? When would you know?
Well, we, we have the people that we will invite back again that came last year. But we need to know that we have money to go out and, you know, see if COSI can come in or Boon Shop can come in or the zoo can come in. We just, we have never, you know, the first year we started out, we had no budget. It was all of us throwing in twenty buck, I don't know, a hundred dollars or something to make it happen. Last year, we did have a budget. We did have more money. But this year, I mean, each year, we got to up our game.
We had fifty-five booths last year. We're expecting to have maybe a few more, but we are starting to hit our limit with space at the high school and using all the gyms. But we're working on trying to be a little more conservative in how we space that out. But we're expecting upwards of sixty booths at least and then looking at putting stuff outside. And some of the stuff that's outside are trailers. There was like a rocket simulator that we'd like to bring from the engineers, the Association of Engineers. And all of them, like, like you said, have some travel expenses to get them here.
Is there any way that, you know, you can find out how many you've got coming so we can cover each other? Or how about...
We, our deadline to apply is in February. So we can try to put an estimate together.
So are we doing a dollar count or are we weighing?
They have asked for a thousand. That amounts in the budget. If we can make a motion in January board meeting, and prove it then, knowing they can move forward, knowing that that's coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any public participation on any agenda items that's coming? Mr. President, we've got 3.2, one work session item before the committee reports. And what this is, is a proposal for the 2018 calendar. Traditionally, this board has met two times a month for a lot of the year. There's November and December when there's only one time. A couple of times last year, we did once or twice. We can't believe, just due to lack of agenda items. And our proposal this year is to, for the set calendar to have one board meeting a month. We've already contacted the board to make sure we don't conflict with that meeting date so that Charles doesn't have a conflict. And then if you needed a meeting here that are special, you can always add it. We, as an administrative team, believe we can have all the items ready to go one time a month. Maybe January ninth, our organizational board meeting. And that would be in January. So we bring that to discuss so that we can prove that, go to January ninth board session.
You think administratively, with all the staff changes and the way that we have, that cadence wouldn't be a problem?
Wouldn't be a problem because you are able to hire someone within thirty days of board meeting. So doing it every two weeks, you don't have to. We can, we can take care of that. And if, for some reason, there's a huge item we've got to act on, quick, we can call you.
I'm curious, when I saw that of the agenda, well, part of the things being incorporated in, in looking with space in buildings. And like, there's some bigger conversations that I see us meeting to have in the future that, to me, are large conversations that are going to take some time.
So to think about going down to once a month, and even with the role of the board, and I know there's plenty of districts that do the once a month, that wouldn't be the only one doing that, but in looking at just the visionary and discussing some of those, I guess that's where some of my questions of how to do that, and how to make it so it's not, we used to go through four-hour board meetings, so that it's not a four-hour board meeting, but we're still able to make sure that we're involved with that piece of it, that we don't lose that piece of it, that we're just going through the business part. Because, I mean, it's good that we're hearing the reporting back, but part of the role of the board is also that strategic visionary part. And I guess that's where I just kind of need to work through how that works.
We don't see us losing that. We believe that there will be great conversations at some or all of these. But we also see, hopefully, two or three of the Saturday-type retreats, where we spend six hours really delving into some topics. I think we had two of them last year. Where you can kind of sit down and, you know, have a little food and drink, and sit and have a more comfortable conversation and a little bit more of a retreat, I guess. We believe that there will still be great conversations here. We just don't believe we need two of them a month. But if there's a need at some point, we can add them. So again, decision points tonight, we'll bring it back to January. Mr. President, we can move down to committee reports. We have one committee report tonight. Scott Marshall, District Parent Council.
We're President Stuckey, Vice President Anderson, members of the board, thank you. We've had two District Parent Council meetings, November, one in November, one in December. The one in November focused, similar to what was presented here. Our educational technologists, Amy Romas, Cheryl Winter, presented about virtual reality and technology within the classroom. The same goggles that you guys saw here were brought in. The parents got to experience what a lot of the students went through, and got to go on virtual field trips. So that was very interesting. It was a popular event that will probably not be topped for the rest of the year. It was also mentioned within that meeting about a Google event taking place March twenty-second at Springboro High School. And that was basically discussed, that Google is coming here to kind of put on a display regarding technology, education in the classroom. So some of our parents were encouraged to sign up for this, to help volunteer. So that was a good outlet for them there. In December, we discussed, we brought in Wendy Ford, mental health coordinator for the district, and she went over the SCAC, just all the opportunities that it provides for families in need within the community. We saw this as kind of a good eye-opener for a lot of the parents who may not be as familiar with this program, or familiar with a lot of the needs that face our students in the district. And so that was a nice presentation that was brought in there as well. There was one more item. Oh, we also discussed, kind of in tune with that HOPE curriculum, which has been introduced into our classrooms on there, which is the Health and Opioid Preventative Education.
You got it.
So that being introduced into the classrooms is kind of a good early start for some of our students to discuss preventative measures, all age-appropriate, of course, depending on the grade level within there. And so Andrea Cook talked about that in our meeting as well. January, we will not have a meeting. The next District Parent Council meeting will be in February. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. President, that ends our committee reports.
I have a few items to read tonight. The first one is the November financial report. The detailed financial reports are on board docs. That's the large, detailed section, but I will do some highlights. Our revenue for November came in at three million, two hundred and fifty-one thousand and eight hundred and forty-eight dollars. A good portion of that, over one point eight million, was due to a little bit late payment on our roll back to home, that we usually get in October, but it did from November this month. So that was a little more revenue than we typically used to get in November, but October was a little short. So for expenditure-wise, we had a little over two point three million for November for salaries, which was right on what we expected, as well as benefits were right on, seven hundred and thirty-one thousand. The January increase will be by percent, so in December, we will take out the premiums, the board and employee portion for January. We always take out premiums a month in advance. So you will see a little increase in December for those January premiums for healthcare increase. Purchase services is a little low this month, and that's because we didn't have a Warren County semi-monthly, or a bi-monthly coverage. The cost for OT or PT, all of our special education services, essentially not every other month, so that did fit already in December, that you'll see when I do the financials for January. The rest of our expenses for purchase service were, you know, as expected, I listed those. They're also on board docs as well. Our supplies, we are grinding under in supplies this year, so far, over sixty-eight thousand under budget. Eight hundred and seventeen thousand was spent in November. Twenty-four thousand went over classroom supplies, twelve thousand for software and computer supplies, four thousand for library books, and about sixty thousand for operational supplies and fuel. Our equipment is also coming in a little bit under budget for the year so far, about twenty-six thousand under budget. We spent thirty-five thousand nine ninety-one in November. Most of that was for Chromebooks, computer guide, and some district-wide hardware software. We're working on another number, another program right now, too, because of course, we've had a lot of, I don't know if you guys have heard about these, but we've had a lot of viruses coming, switching the last couple months after the first. We're trying to re-image every single device in our entire district, so it's quite expensive. So our cash balance for November thirtieth was seventeen million, nine hundred thousand for all funds, and for our general fund, it was two point five million. And again, so starting from December, January, February, our cash balance will significantly reduce until February, we'll start receiving a tax advantage. So those are the financials. We also have donation, we have approval of a donation for items purchased over the years by the Springboro Orchestration Association, which included twenty-two cellos, twenty-one violins, three violas, six basses, plus a keyboard. All of it was valued at about thirty-six thousand, four hundred, and we use in partnership with the Springboro Strums program. Also, we have a donation of twenty dollars from Fully Alive Piano Practice to the Springboro High School Flight Department, as well as a donation of sound system to the Springboro Band Radio, valued at seven hundred and forty-nine dollars, from Parts Express Audio Components and Solutions. And lastly, approval of two fifty-dollar grants from the National Energy Foundation for Lurie and Giver, and Scott Rais's classrooms.
A question for you.
Sure.
On this second page of the handout. Under purchase services. So our college credit plus is under, that's for purchase services, it's under purchase services? So it says the CCP deductions for November are sixteen thousand, nine hundred and nine. Is that it for fall?
No, it's not. So right now, right now, as you can see, it says this represents the first semester of calendar year seventeen, which is spring. So what they do, they're doing it by calendar year, so they start to take out the first deduction that they have, which was from spring of seventeen. And then, once they have fall, then they'll start deducting at fall, and then they'll catch us up, obviously, because it's going to be one large deduction, and we won't have as many months between now and June, so there'll be larger deductions. And then, once they hit summer, that'll also, summer will also be in that as well. So we'll start to see some really large deductions, but they haven't started coming out yet.
Okay, I just thought, but that was just for one semester, though?
That was one semester, and that's per month.
Oh, it's per month?
Yes.
So it wasn't a full semester?
So what happened is, is we'll have, so they say between now and June thirtieth, we owe sixteen thousand, nine hundred and nine a month for spring. So then, when they add summer, they'll say, okay, summer will be an extra twenty thousand. So it'll be the twenty thousand plus the sixteen thousand from now till June. And then, once they add fall, which is the biggie, then that's when you're going to start to see the bars. I'm expecting our CCP deductions to be around a half million this year. So right now, we're small, but then they're going to be giant.
Okay, that makes sense. The number does not feel right. So with that, and this relates to our January board meeting, as we're preparing, I'm assuming that we will have the program of studies on January ninth, then?
That's our plan.
So when would we be receiving it? When would we be receiving it, so we can review it ahead of time?
I think last year, we got it to you, like, seven to ten days ahead of time. That's still our goal, isn't that right, Andrea?
Yes, it's in draft form right now. Our department chairs met with their departments yesterday during our early release for proofing and editing. So it is in process right now, or I think we're on our draft three or four at this point.
Okay, so we would, thank you, so we would be getting that at the beginning of the year, and we would vote on it at the January ninth board meeting, then?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, so in considering, if we're looking at a half million for CCP, and we're thinking of our program of studies, are we considering that, that if a half million dollars is going out to CCP, that the possibility that we're going to have to pull back on classes and potentially on staff? I mean, I just...
We've been working on that, and I know...
Unfortunately, yes. Just short answer, yes. We will build a schedule based on student choice. We're looking at a minimum of twenty-one for all courses that are not continuing courses. So for instance, Spanish Three, I mean, that's a bad example, because it's huge, but if it's a continuing course and we were under the twenty-one mark, we would run that because it's a continuation of program. However, all other courses, we're looking at a minimum of twenty-one. Warren County Career Center program set their own minimums. So anything that's staffed by them is separate, so they run a little bit different numbers than we do, but anything staffed by us, we look for a twenty-one minimum.
And so we'll let the students select their classes, but then, if it's not up to the twenty-one, then we remove that class, and then we'll be adjusting staff accordingly?
Yes.
Last year, we adjusted one English teacher, even with all the changes. And last year was almost five hundred thousand, too. We don't have a significant increase. You know, we're hoping we don't have to adjust too many staff, just more of the classes. We actually were offering a few more classes next year, we're not offering this year against some other choices.
But at some point, if CCP keeps going up...
It will affect staff.
It's not to affect staff financially. We have, I mean, I don't want it to have an effect staff, but at some point, we just, we can't keep giving more to CCP and not offering, having fewer classes that we're, that are being taught at the high school.
And that's what we did last year, and we'll continue it each year. We love to make sure the class sizes aren't too small. Got a lot of programs with the class sizes still very, very large. Andrea and her team do a great job of analyzing that.
We've put some programs in to try to attract students to stay here. We've also have a student survey going out very shortly, as far as what can we do to keep you, one of the major ideas that we have, because we have so many going out in English, is offering more electives in English whereby they could get their English Three credit. We lose a lot between sophomore and junior year, so we're talking about the possibility of a student being able to take, for instance, a science fiction course as opposed to the standard English Three course, or a course of their choosing with literature that they would like to read. So we've got a lot going on. We're looking forward to presenting that program of studies to you with all of the new ideas in it, but we do have a lot coming your way that I think you'll be excited to hear. We're hoping the students are too.
With regard to the CCP, did we ever quantify the impact, potential impacts of some of the changes in terms of the requirements? And we thought maybe it wouldn't have much impact?
Yes.
With like the remediation free, and...
We're working on that now. We're also working on, we've been a little bit flexible with our public as far as students making decisions past the deadline. We're going to also make that change. This year, we're holding to deadlines, where if we get a student who pops up in mid-June and says, "Oh, I decided I want to do CCP." If you miss the deadline, our staffing is based on deadlines, therefore, we're going to hold you to deadlines. So that's another decision that we're putting into place that'll hopefully allow us to toe a line a little bit better financially.
Also, we're going to have to make that decision to parents and students as well, so don't surprise them.
Is the time of student cutoff that we, that you referenced, is that the same cutoff we've used previously, or is that...
Last year, we increased from seventeen to twenty-one. So we were at seventeen, and we jumped that up to twenty-one last year.
Yeah, so this is consistent with last year?
It is. And of course, we're open, I mean, you're the board. If you tell us you need to hire, we'll go hire.
I was just curious if it had changed yet?
No, we're not changing that, unless you advise.
All right. Do you have a motion to accept four, one, two, four, five?
A motion.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Under the superintendent's report, we have one item denied. It is the approval of about ten or twelve second reading board policies. All of these came from Miola, actually, twelve policies, all of these came from Miola. There's four new ones, and the rest are revisions of current policies we have.
Is there a motion to accept five point one?
Certainly.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes. Yes.
President, we move down to the Director of Special Education.
I have a question real quick. And I'm, tell me if I'm not supposed to ask this now, because I feel like with sunshine law, I need to ask it now, that it needs to be out in the public, so, and I can't just ask it. If I have a question about a policy as a whole, about us just considering, do we have a policy with this? I think I need to do it now, am I correct with that? On equity, just overall equity, would now be an appropriate time?
You can, you can also ask that in between work meetings, too.
So that's okay? I didn't know if that would be something that would break sunshine law, I would ask that.
No, you just ask it, and we can let you know if there's a policy or if there's one in the board.
I know there's not.
And then we can check if they have, Miola has a bunch of policies that we don't even have, because over the years, we've either decided not to have them, or they decided not to show it for some reason. So if there's one you want us to research...
Yes.
We can contact them.
Great, great, okay, yeah. Can we have, can we have them look at equity, not discrimination, but equity?
In terms of...
In terms of, I'm in a work group, that we've been researching one with Baltimore, and of what Baltimore has. So it's equity around whether minorities, special education, so that all of these things are being considered in all decisions. So whether you're talking discipline, whether you're talking, and there's a variety of things, cultural responsiveness, employment retention, recruiting. Yeah, I just, when I went and looked at what policy we had in place, it was more around discrimination. So I was just interested to see, did Miola have one? Would we consider, I think, we should at least look at this, but I didn't know, I didn't know exactly when we should be putting this out there.
We can look at that, and I can definitely have the answer for you early next week, if you please.
Well, there's no rush to it. I just would like to have a discussion as a board about possibly implementing that within our district, and what that could possibly look like. And I'd like to look at Baltimore's to consider it, because I think it's a really good, practical one.
Can you send us the link to the board?
I will. I only have a hard copy right now, but I'm getting a neat copy. So I'll send it to the board and you guys. Thank you.
Mr. President, we're moving to the Director of Special Education's report, and allowing me to introduce her to the first presentation she's had at this board meeting, Emily Hill.
Thank you. I only have one thing, seeking approval today for transportation intuition for a student who is placed in an outside facility.
She talks a lot, folks.
To accept six, one.
Seven.
Second. Third. Any discussion? Roll call.
Anderson? Cap? Alche?
Yes.
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 Under our executive director of district documents, District panel is unable to be with us tonight, to a payment commitment. We have two items for your consideration. The first one is our typical staffing personnel report. There are eighteen items tonight. We have a few resignations, all based upon personal decisions. I do want to make special mention of item number six. Mindy Tischler, District Human Resources Administrative Assistant. She has had many positions within our school district. Has been a very valuable, valuable employee for our district for many years. Comes to school every day with a positive attitude, do great work at the, she will invest, she has another position in the Third Creek Township, and they are excited to have her in the human resources role there. The rest of them, many of them are, you know, filling either part-time roles, or we have some leave of absence.
Is there a motion to accept seven, one?
Certainly.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Dad? Yes, Palachi?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Our second item under the personnel report are our athletic contracts for this, for this time period, actually. Oh, there it is. Five, five people for either seasonal managers or coaches.
Is there a motion to accept 7.2?
Certainly.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Dad? Yes, Palachi?
Yes, yes.
I understand.
Mr. President, we're ready for the board member reports, comments, and then we'll have some comments by student speakers as well.
Just real quick again, I think the students have left, or the folks have left, as well as the teachers, the big issue for their presentation, you know, Mr. Palachi and I were talking earlier, it just, it boggles my mind, the learning experiences that we offer our students. You know, I guess I'll date myself here compared to when I went to, was that third grade? It just, it's amazing. So I'm, I'm excited to see that. I mean, but at the same time, beyond the technology, I think it's really important to recognize the collaboration that goes on between the students, the staff, the teachers from various departments. I mean, that, that doesn't just happen, and it's not the technology that does that, you know? Things like that happen because people want to make it happen, and they put an extra time and effort. So again, I think sometimes, being in Springbrough, we just assume that's the norm, but it's not. So again, if nothing else, just another tip of the hat, thank you to giving students that type of experience, because again, like we were saying, they'll, they'll remember that for the rest of their life, you know, versus flipping through a book, which is what I did. So again, big thank you, thank you to all the donations, especially all the instruments that was very, that's a good, good course. And again, I, I guess, finally, I would just say, you know, we're, as we're nearing the half year, or the halfway point of the year, I think we have a lot to celebrate for the district, and you know, wish staff, teachers, and students a very happy holidays, a safe holiday, and I can't wait to get back to work in January. So thank you.
I echo a lot of what Mr. Good said, particularly about the student presentation. Wonderful, did everything he said there. It's just tremendous teamwork amongst the staff, and it's just great to see even how the students were, were working in that team setting. I mean, those are really valuable skills for them as they continue to progress. I mean, you know, speaking professionally, we work, we're, we're working in group settings, you know, and I just love to see that they're getting that, that opportunity to interact with one another, and that our staff has done a great job creating that environment for them. I also want to, again, congratulate our preschool team. I know most of them have left, but you guys are still here, so thank you again. Wonderful to see that recognition, and so I appreciate all of your efforts in that regard. And then, also wanted to thank the STEM Fest committee, some of the folks are here. I know that our kids have thoroughly enjoyed it, the couple of years that they've been, and so I just appreciate all the time and effort that goes into that. I've been looking forward to another successful year here in, in March, so thank you for, for all the time and the dedication you guys put into that event, because it's great. Seeing other communities rally around that, and just to really enjoy the evening, so again, just appreciate all your effort. Since I wasn't at the, the last meeting, I also wanted to, to send my congratulations to Mr. Good, and Mr. Anderson, and Mr. Stuckey on their election for another term. Otherwise, I say congratulations, or I'm sorry. I guess I'll go with congratulations, that you're, you're locked in for another four years, so just wanted to say great job on that. And also to thank everybody that supports the levy. Thank you to the community for showing your support of the school, and to all the folks that serve on the levy committee, Mr. Schreier, and Mr. Floyd, particularly, who put a lot of time and energy into that. So since I wasn't at the last meeting, I know it's old news, but thank you for that, for that effort. And then, again, to reiterate a point that Mr. Good brought up, just want to wish everybody a happy holiday, and I know that the year's winding down, people hopefully will take some time off, and enjoy it with their family, and come back recharged for, for a great 2018, so thank you. There was a lot that I missed last year.
Good for you. Good.
Catch up.
I haven't had such a time. First off, of course, I have to state again, congratulations to the preschool. I love what Senator Wilson said with the importance of early childhood education, and to be able to recognize your team with that was just awesome tonight, because it is a critical, critical piece in kids' development. So kudos to you guys for that, and it's done with now, so yay. It's nice to be dating, so it's awesome. So it was neat having so many of them here to accept that, too, because it was you guys that did it, so great job for that. And it was just neat to watch the kids' faces up here, and the way that they were, like, when the two little girls talked to the two little boys, oh yeah, I did this, and I, you know, just to see that excitement was just refreshing, and that's the kind of stuff that, like you said, that's what they're going to remember, it's not what's in the book. So it's neat to see this, this new stuff coming with the Google, Google Bob, Google Bobles, whatever it's office. That was just, I saw that when I was at OSBA conference, they brought that. And to be able to experience that, I'm like, that is what's awesome. So being able to bring that new stuff to our district and to see the excitement in their faces was just really inspiring, so thank you for that. The last thing was, I had a really cool thing this weekend. I went to the, one of the girls' basketball games, and then the hockey game, and I did not realize that we have kids from our choir that sing the National Anthem at every single game. I didn't know that it was every single game. I had noted that it happens a lot, but I didn't realize that we have these representatives at every single game. And we have, when I was at the hockey game, we had Mrs. Jamison and Mrs. Sharkey that were both there supporting the, the student that was singing there. And they took their Saturday night, and Olin Tangi was late because of the snow that was kind of humid, and they just stood there and waited and encouraged, and that's the thing, and when she found out that I had been at the game previously, she's like, oh, how did Miss Singer do at the basketball game? And she was so concerned about him. And that's the stuff that is just way above and beyond. They left their family, and she said, I really tried to get to all these games, but I had, I was at this one, and that's the kind of stuff that so many people just don't even know. I had no clue that they tried to get to all of these games and that they set up. That's not in their contract to do, that's just the things that they do to help support our other, the other events that we have going on. So that was just a really neat thing to kind of sit back and happen to see, you know, from an outsider, just kind of looking in. So thank you to Mrs. Sharkey and Mrs. Jamison for just what they do in supporting that, and it was neat seeing other choir kids come in and support their choir friends that were there singing the National Anthem, and just what it meant for that, and come alongside the sport, so it was exciting. That's it.
There you go.
I know.
Just congratulations to everybody once again for Clear Creek. Yep, that's awesome, and that's a, that's a nice, nice accomplishment. It's a lot of hard work, whatever it is. And the kids, the kids are amazed, we, those, I mean, I don't know about you guys, but going back to those, I think back, I would have never gotten up in front of a group of people like this and spoke, and I know they were coached by the teachers, but still, just they handled them so, so well. And I, I was struck, every time there's a presentation, teachers get up, and they, they'll say, explain how an idea started, and then I said something to tell them so, and they said, well, I can help you with that. I mean, it's just so casually how they describe that whole process of how they collaborate that sometimes is lost, and, but, but there, in Springbrough, there is, I think Dan said it as well, there's a, there's a sense of camaraderie, and, and I used to use the analogy of climbing up a ladder, and instead of, you reach over and you, you help the person next to you get up that ladder in, in, in a business setting, but that's exactly what they do, really. They help each other attain heights, and those kids are the, the children are the, the product of that, so kudos, just happy holidays to everybody.
Want to say congratulations again to Clear Creek, and it was really exciting to hear that we got the five-star rating. And once again, like everybody said, the kids were amazing tonight. Lisa kind of touched on it, but it's, it's neat to see how well they work together. I can't remember, that was magic. Remember the pictures there, they said something at the bottom, or Hyrum Cliff, it's, that's what you and I were part of, and I don't even remember what... We never did anything like that in third grade, or that time period where we worked as a group on stuff, so that was, that was really neat to, to see how, how far we've progressed in technology. Then, happy holidays to everybody, hope it's safe, and, and have a good one, so.
All right. Do we have any principals that'd like to give any highlights?
No, go ahead. Go ahead. Go ahead. Just this week, we have been really celebrating and taking on the core value of generosity. And at Five Points, I am just honored and touched to be part of such a great experience with our students and families who have generously donated so much just today, and even the other day with the Warm Hugs Fund. I think we pulled in over $700. Today, we had our silent gift giving. We had seven vans full of supplies and food items taken over to our Springbrough Community Assistance Center, and we also started just this year, the Holly Jolly Helper, and we encourage students to earn money at home for chores and things around, around the home, to donate to support some of our families that we've adopted for this holiday season. And so I am very honored and touched by the big hearts of our students and families at Five Points, because it makes me very proud and grateful to be a part of that, that community. And a big thanks to Mrs. Gray, who's been a part of our holiday shop all week long. The kids have enjoyed shopping for little items to, you know, share for their, maybe their brother or sister, mom and dad. It was really cool to hear one of the students like, yeah, I got a diamond for my mom. It was awesome. And I, it was just great to, you know, he just felt so good about making that purchase, and, and that's what it's all about. So I really, I'm, I'm just having a great time this week. It's been a very busy week, Mrs. Gray can attest to that, we have been happen, but it's been just, just awesome to be a part of that experience at Five Points, so tomorrow's Friday, and we wrap up our holiday shop, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Griffin.
Did Mr. Brinkley? I think, yeah. How many do I have?
Well, I should be standing shoulder to shoulder with Tracy, because those are the same sentiments I would love to share. Being here just shy of six months, I have not been in a community that's still giving a compassion. We too at Clear Creek have raised over $700 to give towards Warm Hugs, and our families are just so generous overall, and that's a wonderful part of our community. But I really want to give a shout out to this lady, and thank all of you for allowing me to continue my work, my professional work with Jessica Jones. She is a wonderful human being and has done nothing she worked her tail off for step up equality, and definitely should be the one recognized tonight, so.
Thank you. Kudos back to Carrie. I'm a good leader.
Thank you, Mrs. Quarter. Mrs. Coe?
I have two. They're equally as exciting. I don't even know which one to start with, but I will start with one that's most recent, just a few hours ago. We did a Skype session with two subject matter expert engineers at NASA with 512 students. I did not believe we could do a Skype with 512 students till this afternoon. It went off without a hitch, due to the hard work of our teachers, who did a lot of work at the forefront prior to this session. NASA entertained us by having two experts answer 16 questions from our young folks, including, what kinds of classes did you take to prepare to be a NASA employee? How long does it take to get to Mars? We learn in sixth grade about proportions, is this something you use on the job? What kinds of math do you do? Where do you use the restroom in space? And several other questions. Wait, sixth grade needs to know how they go potty in space. And one of the things that I thought was very interesting, to go along with our career ed, one of our experts told us that NASA will have 50% of their employees eligible for retirement within two years, so they did a little bit of recruitment of our sixth graders as far as the need for employees in the future, which I thought was interesting. As young as they are, it's never too early. The other item that I had is our partnership that we signed this week with the University of Cincinnati for our IT program that we partner with the career center on. Our students will have the opportunity to finish their first year of college here at Springbrough High School, and have direct entrance into the Information Technology Program at University of Cincinnati, and they will be eligible for their first internship the summer they graduate from high school. So they won't even have to wait a year within the IT program at the university to do that. They will be eligible for paid internship upon high school graduation. So like I said, they're equally as exciting, they're both math, science things, so maybe I can bring you the arts next time. I could do a cartwheel right now, I was so excited about that Skype this afternoon. You could hear a pin drop in a room full of 512 kids, so too exciting. Thanks for your time.
You know, and to finish this meeting before we go to executive session, we all have a keychain in our pocket. Mine, I think I have more of those Prover things and so forth than you have keys anymore. Of my last two years, Great County Career Center, a marketing teacher named Mrs. Dean gave me a different ring each year to add to my keychain. One says integrity, and one says fire. Put on there is always reminded to give, or remind us some important qualities. Christmas is an important season. It is a season, obviously, of spending time with family, a season of thankfulness, but it's also a season to believe, to believe in miracles. So I think we have miracles that happen every day here at Springbrough Schools. But Mrs. Floyd and I want to do something a little special for the board tonight, and on behalf of all of the almost 6,000 students and over 600 staff here in Springbrough Schools, we believe in not only public education, but we believe in great board leadership. And you've got to write and put on your keychain that says believe, because we believe in all of these. So thank you, everyone. As a summary, we move into executive session.
Okay, we have a motion to move into executive session.
I'll make my motion.